Good evening, everyone. Today's Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. Tonight's meeting is -- this meeting hearing of the AIR Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom in Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number 897-9080-0793, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at ATM@AIR.MA.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to the meeting. If I could ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Is Sean on there?
I don't see him yet.
Any amendments to tonight's agenda?
I don't have any. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay. Again, I know Sean is zooming in. Is he on there?
No.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
The chair says aye, agenda's approved. Okay. All right, we have one announcement -- well, we have two announcements. There are two vacancies on the Council of Aging Board of Directors. Please contact the Select Board's office to submit a letter of interest. And the annual townwide cleanup will be held on Saturday, April 22nd, 2023. Okay? All right. Anybody here for public input? Yes. If you could come up? Please state your name and address.
My name is Amy Mesher.
Oh, hi.
11 Gardner Lane, AIR, Massachusetts. So I am here representing the Fourth of July Celebration Community Group. And I just wanted to publicly invite all of you to our three-day weekend event and to let you know a little bit about our group because we are all new to planning this and we're very excited about what we have planned. We do have a mission, and I'd like to be able to share that with you as well. The mission of the community-based Fourth of July group is to come together respectfully, dedicated, and prepared to brainstorm and implement a new and improved celebration of not only the Fourth of July, but with a focus on community and families where memories will be made and traditions founded. As when we were discussing things, one thing that just kept popping up was, our kids experienced that, our kids remember this, we had a fun time doing that. And so this is truly a community-based event. So this event will happen June 23, 24, and 25. We are very ambitious. On June 23rd, we're having a movie night down at Peroni Park in which APAC is going to be helping us out, which we are very appreciative. And we have a Boy Scout troop who is going to be providing popcorn for donation because you need popcorn with a movie. Then on Saturday, the 24th, we will kick off with a parade, starting at St. Mary's at 12:30. It will march through the center of town to Peroni Park where they will find food trucks, vendors, and entertainment. We have a couple of bands so far, a good amount of vendors with various things of homemade as well as, you know, maybe direct sale things happening. And we have some food vendors that people are very excited about, although I am in desperate need of a fried dough truck.
Oh, gotta have a fried dough truck.
Because I have been told we cannot do this event without fried dough. I'd also like to acknowledge Chief Johnston and Chief Gill as they have been tremendous help in planning this because, like I said, we are new to this and they have been incredibly helpful with the knowledge they have from past years. So we would love to invite the Select Board to be part of our parade as you are our elected officials. We, as a community, elected you, and so we should celebrate you. And we would love for you to be part of our parade, so please let us know if you would like to participate. And if you had any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, but that's -- I just wanted to make a public invite.
Well, thank you very much. Yes, it's been very exciting. I understand that you've actually had a request for movie night of Yankee Doodle Dandy?
Yes, yes. There are certain people in town that I've become very good friends with on Facebook, for sure, yes.
I also hear that you were -- that one of the ideas being floated around is like cornhole tournament?
Yes.
So let me know if you need any cornhole boards. I have a couple.
Perfect.
Okay.
That would be wonderful.
All right.
Thank you so much.
So that's definitely something fun and, you know, in case nobody's mentioned it, tug-of-war, that was one of my memories.
Tug-of-war, all right. The EMT is going to be there for tug-of-war.
More importantly, is there going to be a mud hole for people to polish? So, no, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I think I will be around.
Wonderful.
Whatever you need me to do.
Perfect.
Okay.
Perfect. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very exciting. Yes, Chief?
I just want to make sure residents are aware, this coming Saturday, April 8th, from 10 to 12 with the fire department, we're going to have an informational session with coffee and pastries. That's in regards to the department's upcoming FY 2024 capital request and debt exclusion. They can get any answers to questions regarding why we need the equipment, funding process, and the requested amount. So this coming Saturday at the fire station from 10 to 12. We encourage residents to come down if they have any questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else here for public input? Okay. All right, whoops. All right, so Lori Nearing, is she on?
Uh-uh.
No?
No.
Okay. All right, she had asked to be put on the agenda for 6:05, so, all right, she's not there, so, okay, we're moving on. All right. So for 6:10, we have the final review and approval of the 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Joint Meeting of the Select Board and the FinCom. Kurt, do you want to bring your committee together?
Yes, Madam Chair. My name is Kurt Fraskowski. I'm chairman of the Finance Committee, and I'd like to call our committee to order. I am present here, and via Zoom, we have, if you can just acknowledge, Andrew Sealy, Jin Hong, and Sebastian Cordova. And...
Good evening, guys, I'm here.
Thank you.
I didn't hear.
Kurt, I'm also here. This is Jin Hong.
Good, thank you, Jin.
Okay, great. All right, thank you, okay. So the FinCom's been called to order, so we have the final review of use of free cash for the 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. Robert?
So, Madam Chair, members of the Board, members of the Finance Committee, before you commence with the review of the warrant, Madam Chair, just a couple of things that I just wanted to point out. As the Board knows, it's a document that is always evolving, so I passed out the most recent version to members, and I just want to point out just there were some minor items for discussion before the review, and they're highlighted in yellow. So the first item actually is under Article 10, which is the Borrow article for the capital budget requests. When we were putting the document together, I guess it's the joys of, what do they call it, cut and paste, and there was a cut and not a paste. There were three items that I want to make clear were approved for recommendation on January 19th by the Capital Planning Committee. DPW stormwater, storm culvert improvements for $130,000. Under the Water Enterprise, the Grove Pond green sand valve replacement for $50,000. And the Sewer Enterprise, the replace the wastewater treatment plant boilers at $100,000. These were approved on January 19th and recommended by the Capital Planning Committee. They were in one of the draft versions, and then we noticed for some reason it had been cut out. So those are -- should be in Article 10, and the new total would be $2,965,979. A similar thing happened on Article 13, which is the capital budget requests for the transfer articles. So these are the items recommended by Capital Planning that we will pay for out of capital stabilization. And there were two for the library, the library HVAC repairs of $25,000, and the library roof repairs of $15,000. Again, got cut off one of the drafts. These were both approved by the Capital Planning Committee at the January 19th meeting, and that would change the total to 364,200. As I put in the packet, the next item is Article 15, which is the replacement of the AIR Library Trust Funds. The original intent of the article was back in August, as the Board is aware, there was an emergency repair needed at the AIR Library Heating System, and it was time-sensitive that it be done in time before the heating season so the library could open. The budget had already been set, and as the Board will recall, the Finance Committee had not been reconstituted at that time, so there was no way to legally access the reserve fund. The Library Board of Trustees voted to use $35,000 from one of their unrestricted funds for the repair, and the intent was to replenish that with free cash. Upon the legal review from Town Council, we've been advised just this week that the DOR does not permit the use of free cash to replenish a trust fund. So we're going to withdraw Article 15. It has to be addressed through the regular budget, and that, I think, is a discussion for next year. In full disclosure, I did meet with the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees and the Library Director, and I'll also be sending a memo to the Board of Directors of the library per their request and copy the Select Board and the Finance Committee. So this was caught in the legal review. So with the removal of Article 15 per Town Council, this actually adds, which we'll get to in a second, frees up $35,000 in free cash. The next item is between Article 21 and 22. It was raised at the Second Public Budget Forum on March 8th, the issue of putting some funding towards the July 4th celebration. And it was proposed using $10,000 in free cash towards that. The item was also raised at the recent Byboard Meeting. So highlighted is the article, the proposed article, to fund the FY '24 Fourth of July Celebration in the amount of $10,000. For the same reason with the library that we found out, we can't take free cash per Town Council in the DOR, can't take free cash to replenish the Fourth of July account in general. But what we can do is transfer $10,000 towards the FY '24 Fourth of July Celebration. These funds can be used first towards those activities, and then whatever is raised or continues to be raised can be used. So that is recommended for consideration by the Board. And as of, I just want to point out, as of recently, the current balance, there's $13,768 in the Fourth of July revolving account, and there is $5,000 proposed in the omnibus. Then, if the Board supports that article, there was another request made at the March 8th Second Public Budget Forum regarding the remote, the RRFB crosswalks, the Automated Light System for the crosswalks. And at that March 8th meeting, the DPW Director indicated to the forum they were approximately about $10,000 apiece. There was discussion about using free cash of 100, up to $100,000 for potentially 10 of them. In conversation with the DPW Director since that meeting, he would like to, and I included his memo, the DPW would like to do their due diligence in terms of the engineering and so forth to determine the need or where, what crosswalks this would apply to. And Dan also indicated that there are quite a bit of grant funding for this, and generally, and again, it's the will of the Board, generally try to not use free cash for one-time expenditures like this, and, you know, frankly, something like this should, at least at $100,000, should generally go through the capital planning process. So our position, and again, it's ultimately up to the Board, is let the DPW do the due diligence on this, come back to the Select Board, and plan accordingly moving forward. If the Board wants to do an article to this effect, then we could do another transfer article to that effect. We're recommending that we do the due diligence and go through the process on that. The last couple of items, and I thank the Board for the time, so Article 22, the stabilization fund. If this assumes if you do the $10,000 for the Fourth of July, and the $35,000 is freed up from Article 15, the town would vote to transfer $1,637,300 from free cash, of which $338,073 would go to stabilization, and $750,000 would go to capital stabilization. And again, it's the, you know, purview of the Board to decide those exact amounts, but that's what we're proposing. We're also proposing, in the explanatory note you'll see under Article 22, I've put the strike-through language to remove, of which $300,000 is for the purposes of covering the future year four costs of the SAFER grant for the four firefighter positions. As said repeatedly, this is the stabilization article. It goes into stabilization. For it to come out requires a two-thirds vote of a duly posted town meeting. That recommendation in the explanatory note was just that, a guidance note. It seems to have caused some confusion and concern recently, so we're just proposing for clarity to strike that out. So, Madam Chair, with that, those were just the final, yeah, those were the final items in the final draft.
Scott?
So one question I have regarding the library, is this something that would, so I know you said go through the regular budget process, but is this something that we would look to do in maybe at the fall town meeting? I know it's outside the omnibus budget, but do a raise article at the fall town meeting or just next year? And I guess I'm trying to phrase the question, like, what is the sense of urgency around replenishing the $35,000?
So the first point through the Chair, and not speaking for the library board, but at least in the conversation with the Chair and the Director, the good news is there's no urgency on the funds. So the issue was, under the normal course, we would have either used the reserve fund or if it hadn't, but at the time, there was no access to the reserve fund in the timing. So it would most likely be something to be resolved in the FY '25 budget. What you raised, there could be a potential mechanism for the fall, and Town Council is going to fully research it, but there isn't an urgency. It's more of making that library resource, if you will, whole.
Okay. So that's going to impact the required local funding calculation for the library over the next five years, right, or three years after it occurs?
Excellent point. So that's the consideration. So two things that are being looked at is if the $35,000 was used for a capital project, it would be exempt from a capital for the library, or if it was used for maintenance. But you're correct, if we just, it would affect them.
Okay. That's just something to keep in mind.
Yeah.
Not that I don't want to fund the library, I don't want that to be misconstrued, but it is a very hard calculation that we, as a community, have to stick to in our budgeting.
Agreed. And both the Director and the Chair brought that up when I met with them.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No, I think that was it. Thank you.
And just one last point, Madam Chair, and maybe the Chair of the FinCom wants to speak to it. This draft also includes the recommendations of the Finance Committee, which they voted on at their March 29th meeting. So you'll see their positions as voted throughout the warrant.
All right. So I have a quick question, and I see Pauline has her hand up. On the crosswalks, if we choose to do the recommendation, how long is it going to take? You know how I love government, some days, how slow it moves. So how long would it take to do this study and whatnot?
I don't want to speak for the DPW Director, but it's going to be done internally by him and the engineers, meaning the town engineer and the junior engineer. I would say probably over the course of the summer, tops, and it may be something that could be revisited at the fall town meeting by then. And he is prepared, as I put in the memo, to give whatever public updates. It's not that, it's not that it's a bad idea, it's not, it's just that I think we should A) do our due diligence, and I'm deferring to him to determine which ones they're going to, you know, do. And also, do we want to get into the practice of using free cash for one-time purchases of this nature, especially when they haven't gone, been vetted through the process? That's a question for the Board.
So my initial thoughts, thank you for asking that question. That's actually a very good observation. If we were to shift the split on the stabilization, say to put an extra $100,000 in the capital stabilization, let the study occur over the summer, we can go into the fall with an article to move the funds out of capital stabilization in the fall. So we can, we can set it aside in capital stabilization at this meeting, and then when we get into the fall, we can reconvene Capital Planning for a couple of meetings to go through the process, once the study's done, get their recommendations, and if it gets recommended through Capital, then we can move into fall from capital stabilization. That's one avenue.
No, that's absolutely an avenue, yes.
All right. Pauline?
I'm sorry, I was trying to unview. Thank you, Janice, for recognizing me. You have actually taken my thought process with respect to your question. I intended to start with the Fourth of July free cash funding, but let's carry through with the crosswalk because I brought that up as well, that whenever in March. Here's my thought on it, and I speak from historical experience, but we often put things off to do them later because we need to do a study. And I appreciate a study needs to be done. It is April, when we will approve these funds. The funds will not be available until July, and if they are not spent, as I understand from Robert's memo, any money allocated from free cash that's not spent goes back to free cash. We wait till October, the answer will be, well, it's winter, and we can't put up street signs and this, that, and the other thing because the ground is frozen. That's what the, that's the explanation I was given when I asked for street signs at Adams and Central Street last year. We have them now, they had to wait till spring to be put up. So here's my suggestion, further suggestion. Fund the $100,000 now. The study should be able to be completed by July 1st, based on Mr. Hernan's memo. There are only three areas where these flashing crosswalk signs would even be eligible, and if we don't spend it by June 30th, 2024, it goes back to free cash. So at least the money would be available right away, not waiting until October for another round of discussion for whether or not we want to fund this. Put the money there, we have it, let's start, let's go back. We have the money, put it there. We don't spend it, put it back. Simple.
Okay.
In my view.
Okay. So, Scott?
I'm more of a process guy. I'll admit, I would like to, I like capital, since it's looking at $100,000, I think it should go through the capital process. But I'm open to either, we could allocate the funds and then, you know, let the study be completed. We could still work through Capital over the summer, one or two meetings to get their approval, so to speak.
So just devil's advocate, you all know how I love doing devil's advocate. What if instead of, so we're looking, we're talking about $100,000 for a...
Is that being heard too, just saying that? In the audience?
Okay, hold on. Instead of $100,000 for a potential 10, which, I mean, would we really be putting up 10? I just, I can't see.
That's a big question.
What about $50,000 for 5?
I would go 60 because I think you want an even number, right, one on each side of the road, depending on the location.
Sorry, Scott, what would be your thing you just said?
We're just discussing as to whether or not, do we want to go for 100 for 10 or 60 for 6? So, we're, yeah, yeah, hold on, hold on. Yes, Susan, you had a question?
Susan?
Yeah.
Okay. So, two things, as a previous finance tax collector and treasurer, I do believe in the process, so I do believe the process should be vetted. And there was a letter from the DPW Director and the engineer professionally in what they can do. I understand the outcome can be the same at the same time, but there is a process that we follow, that we're all asked as department heads to do, and a letter from the department heads. And unfortunately, they're not here, but I want to speak on their behalf that they put the time and effort to do what they need to do. And so I just feel that this could open up, honestly, for other things down the line. It's not that the process isn't being looked into and being vetted properly, but we need to sort of respect that as well, that there's a department that wants to do this the right way, possibly even get grants. And I understand at the end, money can go back, but that needs to be looked at as well, that you could be going around somebody who is doing this and doing the process and probably has put in a lot more time and effort than you don't realize yet. So I just want to put that in there as well. But there's also a financial process we need to be following. So that should be the first and foremost, and not a maybe-if scenario. That's just my point. So.
Thank you.
Yes.
So that, just to follow that, that it is generally not considered a positive thing to do one-time purchases from free cash, which is where Scott's idea to go into capital stabilization, do the process, and then potentially use it going forward would still maintain that process, and like Susan said, allow time for grants and whatever work the DPW has already done.
Well, I do agree also with the fact that, you know, we don't want to be so long, and then we get into a winter season, and we can't put something up because the ground is too cold. So that's why I would ask, because I know that, you know, they do their due diligence, okay? And this is what's happening, they're doing their due diligence, they're focused on this issue. What do you mean the boiler's not working anymore? And they have to go work over there, and this gets sidelined. So that is, that is, you know, normal, okay? And understandable, but at the same time, we also want to make sure that somebody would come back to it, okay? But to be fair, again, you know, you get a list, the DPW's got a list, and every time, they have all good diligence, they're going to do their list, and something happens, and they have to go, okay, this one has to wait, and that becomes a problem. And that's just normal. It's nothing bad, okay? So that's where sometimes it seems like it takes so long, okay? Because everyone forgets that, you know, the boiler blew up and we had to go take care of the boiler, okay? So what do you want to do?
I actually, so thank you, Susan, for speaking. Actually, what spoke to me was that there were nodding heads from all the department heads behind her.
Yes, I noticed that too.
She makes a very good point, and I think we should stick to the process. So if we do want to allocate funds potentially for the fall, we can shift the amount that's going to... we can shift the amount that's going into capital stabilization for this town meeting, give the DPW time to go through their process. We can, if they get the study done, we can go through capital planning ahead of the Fall Town Meeting, and then we can look for the funds out of capital stabilization at the Fall Town Meeting.
I agree, I agree. I think it is the best process, so that's what we will do. Kurt, did you want to, anything? You looked like for a second that you wanted to say something.
No, no, no.
Okay, okay, no, all right.
Not at this time, thank you.
So Madam Chair, I have another comment I wanted to speak about with respect to the Fourth of July.
Right, so if I can get back to you on that one, because we haven't discussed it. So let's discuss it, and then I'll, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, so about the Fourth of July?
All right, so Fourth of July, so current budget's $13,000, going through the numbers. We have $5,000 in the omnibus budget, so that will go up to 18.
Yep.
And then, with this article, given the language, it would allocate $10,000, which would then draw off first. If the $10,000 is used, we go into the $18,000, that would be in the account. If it's not all used, say they use 7, 3 would go back to free cash at the end. Is that correct?
Yes, it would fall back.
Yes.
So that's why you'd want to use it first, and keep the revolving.
And, if I may, Madam Chair, so until the legal review from Town Council and with DOR, I mean, I think the intent was, would take $10,000 from free cash and transfer it into the Fourth of July account, right? We can't do that. So what we can do is we can transfer $10,000, just as you said, from free cash for FY '24. They use that first, and then get to the other items, to the other funding sources.
So my other question is, from a semantics perspective, is, the budget is not final, because the warrant has been printed. Can we just increase the Fourth of July budget by $5,000 or $10,000? Then we don't have to worry about dealing with the free cash language?
So the appropriated amount that's in the budget of $5,000 also is not part of the revolving account? So we would use the $10,000, and you'd want to use your appropriation in the revolving account?
All right, now I'm super confused, but okay, and I've been doing this for a while.
Madam Chair, I think what he's saying is, rather than-
Maybe I misunderstood.
Yeah, deal with the, just readjust the omnibus budget now by increasing it by $10,000. And then, we don't have to deal with the free cash transfer or the capital stabilization or whatever after, right?
Yes, thank you.
So eliminate the free cash altogether.
Eliminate the free cash, but increase the omnibus budget line by the $10,000. The stabilization number will stay the same with what's recalculated with the article, even though we're going to strike the article. It just changes the total omnibus budget.
So you're saying, you're proposing increase the FY '24 omnibus amount from 5 to 15?
Correct. And very similar to having, sorry, I didn't mean to-
No, I was just agreeing, yes.
So very similar to having an article that town meeting can vote against, if you set a budget at a certain level, town meeting can always reduce that budget, if they think that's too much. So if people don't think this is the right move, they can still ask to reduce that on town meeting floor. But you can't go the other way around, where you can increase the budget.
So we could increase the omnibus budget prior-
Prior to, yeah, as long as it's in the final order.
But that doesn't change it, that would then make the $10,000 go back into free cash to be used somewhere else. So the omnibus budget, yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Because that, the free cash we're using is from the prior fiscal year. So we just increase our omnibus budget by $5,000.
For $10,000.
By $10,000.
Yes, for $10,000.
So it would become $15,000 on the omnibus. Okay.
So that, what that would do is just increase-
Hold on, Susan, because Pauline wanted, Pauline, did you still have your question?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I propose this, as you all know. And we all know, I think at the table, you all have been reviewing the financial policies for the last, I don't know how many months. And I got this idea by doing that very thing. The current policies that have not yet been updated state the following on page nine. "As a non-recurring revenue source, a prudent use of free cash would be to fund one-time expenditures, a capital purpose, or to replenish other reserves, but not for recurring operating budgets, according to the DOR." So both of these streetlights and the Fourth of July funding ideas emanated from my reading of that. The amount actually expended for Devon's Day was $6,600, according to a memo from Fred Aponte dated August 16, 2022. So that was my proposal, I think I said around $7,000 when I first proposed this. I think Mr. Hood, not I think, I know Mr. Hood suggested $10,000 at the last by-board meeting, and that's all fine. Not using free cash is fine, putting it in the omnibus, where most people will never see it, is fine, but I think that might not be the case this year. But that's where I came up with the concepts that I proposed. So, I know you're still looking at the financial policies. I think you still have work to do before you approve them. I'm just going to leave it at that. I'm happy that you're replenishing what I believe should not have been spent for Devon's Day, since it was a Fourth of July revolving fund. You want to put more in, you want to suggest the town puts more in, I'm good with that too. So I thank you for the discussion, but I, I'll keep following what's going on with these financial policies, because I think there's a lot to be learned from them. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Susan?
I was just trying to remember, I'm coming back, sorry. I was just trying to remember where the $10,000 figure came from, because I knew it was in an effort to replenish funds that we had used. So that was, I didn't remember it being $10,000, I thought it was less.
Right, so it was 7, and, yeah, and then it was recommended to be 10.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
That's what I needed.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right.
I can go to the 7, I don't know, I mean, 10 came up at one of our meetings.
Well, I think, and I will politely disagree with Pauline's comment about nobody pays attention to the ominous, you didn't word it exactly that way. But, but, you know, because we do, we go line by line on the omnibus, okay? And people do, you know, look at that and everything, so. So I will politely disagree with that one on that. But thank you, Pauline, for your input. So, are we gonna, we're going to raise the-
I'd like to increase the omnibus budget by, I mean, might as well keep it at $10,000. And then we don't need the additional article for a free cash.
So we increase the omnibus by $10,000 specifically, I mean, I guess for the Fourth of July.
Right, to make it to 15, so. Kurt, do you have any questions on her, anybody from your Finance Committee?
I do not. Finance Committee, does anyone have any input on the Fourth of July?
Okay, don't look for anybody, yes, okay. All right. Did we, did we cover everything that you went over? Or do we still need to?
Yeah, I think that's everything.
All right, we don't have to discuss the changing of the explanatory note, right? Okay.
Some point in the back.
Okay. All right. All right, so, change. So now we're looking at the, all right, so we've changed the omnibus. The, the streetlight, the crossing lights are going to get looked into. And, any other questions so far on the warrant?
I don't have any other questions on the warrant. Everything has been, on the new changes have been discussed, so I'm happy with those. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't see anything, so. Kurt, I'll turn it over to, for the FinCom recommendations?
Yes, Madam Chair. The Finance Committee met on Wednesday, March 29, and reviewed all the articles in the warrant. Good discussion. And the result of those was a, art, taking a position on each article in the warrant. In the draft that Robert has prepared for this evening, our positions are noted now in that. And, so, I'd like to note that we've made our position on each article. Is there any input from our committee on that?
I don't have any input, Kurt, but, thank you.
Jen, Sebastian?
This is Jen Hong, I'm fine, I don't have any more input.
Thank you, Jen.
Yeah, I stand by it when we vote it up.
Great, thank you, Sebastian. So that, like, I noted those are in the articles in the draft. Are there any questions of the Board for the Finance Committee?
I have one, sorry, I just had a curiosity question. So I see on Article 5 for the Neshoba Valley Vocational Assessment, there's no position, is there a particular reason?
The reason for the no position on the Article 5 is that we did not actually have a presentation by Neshoba Valley.
Understood.
So we felt that that was a, we had the presentation by the School Board and various other departments, but we felt since we didn't have a presentation, per se, that the prudent thing would be to take a neutral position, no position at this time.
Understood, fair enough.
Janice?
Thank you, Madam Chair, my question was asked and answered.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Q and A, Selectman Hood, I just want to point out, Article 4 and Article 5, which are the, obviously, the school assessment articles, are sponsored by the respective school committees, and there's a spot for the Select Board's position. I just want to point that out. And then the other two, Article 28 and 29, the two community preservation articles, the sponsor of each of those is the Community Preservation Committee. The FinCom has recommended, and there's a spot for your position. So I'm, those four articles are blank right now, as far as the Select Board's position. 4 and 5, 28 and 29.
Oh, there it is, okay. I was looking for the sponsor, and it was on the other page. I was like, wait a second, so. I would just. It was Articles 4 and 5.
28 and 29.
28 and 29.
Yes, I'll make a motion that the Select Board recommend Articles 4, 5, 28, and 29 in the presented omnibus, oh, sorry, the presented warrant.
Yeah, not the omnibus. Seconded, all right. Well, is it ever?
Aye.
Okay, and the Chair says aye. All right, so those have been recommended by the board, okay. Does the FinCom need to make a motion in front, in here tonight, on all the FinCom? Or did they already take care of it?
They, Madam Chair, they already did it on the 29th, it's in their minutes, and they have-
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure, because sometimes that happens here. So I just want to make sure, okay.
Yep.
All right. All right. Were there any other questions on any of the other articles?
I don't have any.
Yeah, I don't. Article 23, are we the, are we a sponsor, or do we need to take a vote on that one?
You're the sponsor. Thank you for pointing, that's actually 23, 24, 25.
Or we're the sponsor.
You're the sponsor, yep. Good catch.
225, okay. Article 26, so we, we sponsor, or?
Yeah, we should be the sponsor on that.
Sponsor on 26?
27.
Yeah, sorry about that, yeah, 26, 27, then we-
6, 27. Okay. And we've already done, recommended for the other articles, for Article. Okay, so, it looks like all we need to do is approve the-
The warrant.
Right?
Madam Chair, just one point of clarification, just so I have it correct. So, where, the article for the Fourth of July celebration, that article is gone.
Correct.
Correct. We are going to increase the omnibus budget by $10,000.
For the Fourth of July?
For the Fourth of July, specifically for the Fourth of July. And then in doing that, the, on the stabilization article, the $10,000, where it says 338073.
Was that 22?
Article 22. We would, this would change, right? So that would change to 348073. Because that assumed, that assumed two things. The 338073 assumed the free cash article for 10, and the removal of Article 15.
So now it's going to go to 328, you said?
348073.
Okay. Why do I feel like, don't look backward, I'm so confused.
All right.
Wouldn't it go down 10?
Yeah, why is it going up?
It'll go down 10, Robert. Because you need that 10 to put it in the omnibus line, right?
I think we're just going to increase the omnibus budget, and it's going to increase our percentage of our budget.
Right.
I can still tie that in, and so this would go back into free cash.
When we, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we bring in all of our revenue, that revenue that we're building our budget off of includes the free cash number. So if we have an article or $10,000 that we're using free cash, but we're moving that over to the omnibus, it shouldn't shift the numbers, because as the omnibus shifts, the stabilization-
To support the omnibus budget.
What?
By $10,000, to increase the omnibus budget, sorry. You said we're going to use the free cash as a revenue source?
From what I understand is, it kind of all gets pulled, so it all gets pulled together when we do our revenue projections. So if we go through the budget, like, where we are going into tonight's meeting, we have a stabilization number of 338, but we also have an article or $10,000 for the Fourth of July. If we shift that article of $10,000 from a spend article on free cash to the omnibus budget, it just kind of shifts the buckets. But I would think the stabilization number would remain steady, the 338.
Yeah, why is it increasing?
So my thought was you'd increase, we usually use here in air our stable, our free cash from the prior year in all these different buckets. We don't usually use it to support the omnibus budget.
Right, I, yeah.
So I was thinking we would put it back into free cash, and then increase the omnibus budget, and I could use some of our overlay as a revenue source instead.
So new finance manager, so different, probably different mechanisms, which is fine. So I'll take your word for it, I don't want to step on-
To do that, so what I'm going to do is increase the overlay used by $10,000, which is another revenue source.
Whichever you prefer, yeah.
That way, we're still fully using our June 30th, 2022, free cash in all these different manners versus funding the omnibus.
Right, so if you take it from the overlay, there's no adjustment needed for the free cash?
You just, yeah, it goes back in.
Yeah, okay.
So it goes to the 348?
Yeah, so it goes to the 348.
So Article 22 will be 348?
And I'm going to use a different revenue source. It's historically, the way Air has done it, I'd like to maintain that, where we don't use the free cash to support the omnibus budget.
Do not be sick that night, okay?
Yeah, so what I'll do is I'll just readjust my revenues using the overlay that was approved from the assessors.
Okay.
And then we'll just put this back into our stabilization.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Ooh, that was confusing.
Yeah.
I know, the, the numbers can be confusing.
Yep, nope, we're good, we're good.
That way, as, that way, again, we're not using stabilization to fund our budget, our omnibus budget.
Pauline?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I was late to tonight's little party, and I'm sorry for that. So I missed when we talked, you, we, you all talked about Article Ten, capital budget request. I just have a simple question, at least I go, because I clearly caused a problem with that $10,000 in free cash, for which I apologize. On the, for lack of a better term, general borrowing, the capital request, borrowing articles, what is the current limit on debt exclusion? Is it 300, or has the, well, I think the policy is changing to 500, financial policy? But isn't the current limit 300,000?
The current limit is 350,000.
Okay, so under SOWR Enterprise, we're requesting to borrow 1,250,000. Why is that not a debt exclusion?
Because that doesn't come from the general fund, and in fact, our general tax levy, that comes from our enterprise direct revenue source.
Okay.
So it's a different purpose.
Nope, that's fine. I, I thought that might be the case, but I never got to capital planning to ask that question. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or concerns?
I have no other questions.
Okay. Okay?
All right. I will make a motion that the Select Board approve the special town meeting warrant as adjusted with the increase of $10,000 to the Fourth of July omnibus line, and increase of stabilization number.
You said special town meeting.
That's what it says.
Right, but that didn't cover.
Oh, no, sorry.
Didn't cover that one.
Wrong cover.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Special and.
Like he said that, and I'm like, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Feeling in my day at work. All right, I will start over.
Okay, so if you want to do the special, approve the special town meeting also, that's fine, but it's going to be two separate.
I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the special town meeting warrant as presented.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
The chair says aye, okay.
I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the annual town meeting warrant with the discussed adjustments with the increase to the Fourth of July omnibus budget line of $10,000, and increase of the stabilization article to 348,000 into regular stabilization as presented.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. All right. Okay. Okay. You'd like to adjourn your committee?
May I have a motion from the committee to adjourn, please?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. So we have the, and the chair, both aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Good work.
Oh, good night, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next up, we are reviewing and approving the cable license with Comcast. And I believe we have Mr. Hewig. Hewig. Did not want to say that wrong, with us, and he was our lawyer. And we also have the chair of our APAC Committee, Janet. She's waving, so, all right.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
So I just want to, there are two items in your packet. There's an executive summary of the new Comcast license as negotiated by the Cable Advisory Committee. As the chair recognized, the Cable Advisory Committee was appointed by the Select Board last fall. Janice Livingston, the Select Board Representative and the Chair, Janet Provodakis from APAC in many hats, Ms. Julie Murray from APAC, and Resident, and Chief Gill were the committee. They were also supported by Attorney Bill William Hewig from KP Law, who's on Zoom, was legal counsel. The Cable Advisory Committee met periodically throughout the fall of 2022 into this first part of 2023, conducted the legally required public ascertainment hearing at the high school auditorium. And before the board and through the chair, I would ask the Attorney Hewig to give just an overview of the major components of the license for your consideration, and then the, the board should respectfully review and, and, and vote to approve.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you, and good evening, Mr. Pondbrand. It's been my pleasure to work with the, with your town manager and the cable negotiators over the past year or so to negotiate and get to present to you tonight a renewal cable license for Comcast. It's a 10-year license, and it replaces a 10-year license. The license that it replaces granted us funding in the amount of 4.65% gross annual revenues a year. And that will go up to 5%, which is the statutory capital. We can't ask for any more than that for the gross annual revenue component, which is, is the operating funding that we get for public access cable television. The 5% will give the access folks somewhere in the neighborhood of $135,000 a year to operate their access programming. And in addition to that, we also get a capital component as well. The current license had a capital grant over 10 years of $150,000, averaging out to $115,000 a year. And our goal for the renewal license was to get $240,000. But Comcast would not grant us that amount in a flat or set, set fee. Instead, they offered to give us a capital grant on a per subscriber basis. And we negotiated to 96 cents per subscriber per month. And that will give us in the first year, somewhere around $27,000. We'll get an annual capital grant, so it'll supplement 135 that the, the gross annual revenue component gets. So we'll get 135 plus about $27,000 a year. In other words, somewhere around 140, 142, or $3,000, something like that, a year from the renewal license. The, as I say, the goal was to get 240,000. If you extrapolate that out, you get more than 240,000 in over 10 years. But we don't know what subscriber levels will be like. So there's a possibility if subscriber numbers go down, and that seems to be the trend, that the amount and the value of that 96 cent per subscriber will also go down. So we're pleased that we've got more than the 240,000 would annualize out to a year. And it was more than 24,000 per year in the early years of the license, and it's possible it'll go down to less than that at the end. So we think we'll at least meet our goal of averaging out to $224,000 a year in that capital grant. That's the funding part of the license. The, the rest of the license was discussed in the executive summary that I sent you, and I can go over that very quickly with you. It's a 10-year license. 10 years is the maximum amount of time that you can renew a cable television license under state statute. And I always recommend that we go for the maximum amount of time, simply to lock in funding for access purposes for as long a period of time as possible, so that they get some amount of predictability in the flow of funding to support their programming, and so that they can plan ahead over two or three or four years. So the 10-year term is recommended, and that's in the license. The service area is, is the entire town. And Comcast will cable any street that's got 25 homes per mile if it is a, a linear mile, if it's aerial, that is, wires above the, the road, and 35 homes per mile if it's, if it's required to be buried underground. And the setback is 125 feet. That is, any house within 125 feet will get free cable service. Beyond that, the homeowner for a longer driveway will have to negotiate some kind of payment with Comcast. 125 feet is the FCC standard for that. The license provides the standard type of insurance guarantees for protection of the town, insurance in the amount of $1,500 CGL to protect the town in case, you know, the, in the, in the, in the course of operating or maintaining a system, people are injured or property is damaged, that sort of thing. There is also workers' comp, and also automobile insurance up to $1 million for liability for people driving Comcast cable vehicles around town. There's a performance bond in the amount of $25,000. That is relatively standard. The license will require Comcast to comply with FCC customer service obligations, and also state billing and business practice standards. Those are consumer protection regulations. I'll give you an example. The FCC customer service regulations include, among other things, a requirement that the cable company answer the telephone within 30 seconds under ordinary circumstances, and they get one chance to refer you to somebody else, that's all. And if the cable company doesn't comply with that, they are in violation of their license. We can monitor them on that. We, we have the right to have, have the right to have a public hearing anytime with the cable company, in my opinion. But the license says you can do it once a year, and you can ask Comcast to bring in their telephone response time statistics. They track that. They'll be able to bring them in and tell you if 90% of the time, they answered the phone within 30 seconds. There are other forms of FCC protections and state consumer protections too, in the manner of billing and that sort of thing. And those are all found in Section Seven of the license. The public education governmental support, the three cable channels will be offered in SD, but the Comcast will offer the town one high-definition channel. And it can be used for any of the three channels that the, that the town would like. It's the board's, it's the board's call. If you want to put public education or government on HD, you can do that. You just have to let Comcast know which channel you want. And, and then there's the, the funding support that I mentioned earlier, the 5%, and the 96 cents per subscriber. The last thing that I usually like to mention is that there is an enforcement feature in the license called liquidated damages. And that allows the board, as the issuing authority, to conduct a public hearing if there are any suggestions or allegations that the cable operator is out of compliance with its license. To do so, you would have a public hearing, you would give them written notice, you would make findings. They could come in, they could offer their side of the story, and you determine whether Comcast is out of compliance with its license. And if it is, you can assess penalties, such as, for example, $50 a day or $100 a day if they're out of compliance with FCC regulations, for as long as they are out of compliance. This is the strongest possible enforcement mechanism you can have with a license, and when they're in the license, you very seldom see any compliance issues with a cable company. And generally, Comcast is a pretty good cable company to have. Cable companies are all unpopular. They're like airlines and oil companies. Nobody really likes them very much. But I will say that Comcast is probably the best one to have in town as far as monitoring and providing good service, with customer service as well as good, good technical service for the programming that they offer. That's the license that we negotiated. And at the end of my letter, I indicated to you that I'd reviewed it, and it meets, in my opinion, the goals that we established at the beginning of the negotiating session for the town. And I therefore take pleasure in recommending that for your approval and review and your, your execution tonight. Thank you. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. So I just also want to put a reminder out there, because sometimes people get a little confused. We don't stop any other cable company from coming into town, okay? They do not want to, because it would cost them capital to put in equipment in here. So if, and we actually sent out RFPs, didn't we, to see if anybody would be interested for Verizon, for FiOS, and everything like that, and nothing. So this is for, really is for the APAC package and whatnot, so.
All right. Thanks for the clarification. I don't have any questions, though I do want to thank everyone who's involved in this. And this comes up every 10 years, so a lot of work does go into it. So thank you to everyone. All right, I will make a motion that the Select Board approve the proposed license with Comcast for the period April 1st, 2023 through March 31, 2033.
Let's say that number. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you, Bill, for everything.
You're most welcome. I've enjoyed my work for you very, very much. You have an excellent team of negotiators. We've done a, we've enjoyed what we did. It's been my pleasure. Congratulations, and thank you for the opportunity to serve you.
Thank you. And thank you, Janet, and everybody else who was on the committee. Julie, Chief. Yep, he's like, yep. He's over here, like, just like, look how happy he is. All right.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Have a nice one.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, this is the, I want to make sure I say this correctly. This is a proposal for building the Senior Community Center Building Committee.
Madam Chair, members of the Select Board, at your meeting on March 27th, you received a site recommendation from the working group as the potential site for consideration for this project. And at that meeting, you did give the green light to proceed with the process, and want to stress the process, because there's a lot to be done moving forward, and to form a formal building committee that would be charged with all of the due diligence for this project. And in that study recommendation was the proposed charge for the committee, which is in the memo that I put in your packet. And we're also proposed that the composition of the building committee, and this is subject, obviously, to the board that, the Select Board that would be appointing it. I mean, this is a proposal proposing a nine-member committee. The committee would be subject to the open meeting law and the public records law, so all of their meetings would be posted, would be public in a public place, minutes, et cetera. We're proposing, we propose nine members. One member from the Council on Aging to be selected by the Council on Aging. The COA Senior Center Director, at this time, is Dr. Katie Petrosi. One Parks Commissioner to be selected by the Parks Commission. The Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Jeff Thomas. The DPW Director, Dan Van Schalwick, professional engineer. One member of the Planning Board to be determined by the Planning Board. And then three Air residents to be appointed by the Select Board. And, and as in the memo, we propose, if the board moves in this direction, that we advertise the three resident positions. People would apply through your office, and then the candidates would come before you at a future meeting to be interviewed, and then the board would select those three. So that's sort of the proposal for the, sort of the next step in, in structuring this. And then just lastly, for everyone's benefit, I mean, again, the proposed charge first would be the oversee the further development of the Peroni Park site location, oversee the conceptual plan development to include extensive public outreach and participation in the conceptual design, identify and secure funding for the design of the project to include town meeting approval, oversee the final design of the project, develop, oversee, and administer the construction budget and project. Also do include town meeting approval where applicable, oversee the construction of the project, and as I mentioned, conduct all the meetings in accordance with the open meeting law, public records law. And lastly, provide periodic public updates to the Select Board and other boards and committees as necessary regarding the status.
So I just want to clarify something. As far as the member of the Council on Aging, the Parks Commissioner, and a member of the Planning Board, those three are also Air residents.
Correct.
Okay. They're just members of other committees. So in reality, you would have at least six Air residents. Jeff lives in Air, too. Seven, okay, minimum of seven. So I just want to. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that, so. All right, any questions?
No questions.
I have no questions.
I'll make a motion that the Select Board create a building committee with nine members as laid out here this evening and presented in the packet.
Okay, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. All right, people that are interested, please submit a letter of intent to the Assistant Town Manager, Carly Antonellis. All right, so, next up was this, the letter to Mass Development Noise Issues. Okay, so I know we, we talked about it briefly. So, so I, I, by the time we got to it, I feel like I rushed through it. So the purpose of this is because, as some of you may or may not be aware, on the weekends, every weekend, from April to October, I think it is, there's some car racing going on at the old airfield. And so you're hearing, all day long, okay? When it does kind of stop for a moment, it's, you're kind of dancing around, hallelujah. So the purpose of this is to try to, and this will probably be a series of, of letters, okay? Because I, I don't think we're going to get their attention right away. But we're going to keep at them, is to get them to understand that they are causing severe noise pollution, which is affecting people in a negative way. So Scott did some updates to this letter, and I like it very much. He streamlined it and made it a little more to the point to be able to get out and, and get out there and say, you know, hey, we really would appreciate it if, you know, this would stop. So did you want to talk about your changes or anything, or?
So to your point, really just tried to really do two things. Streamlined the letter, so it was a little more succinct and to the point, but also, while also still giving some of the details that Alan had put in the initial one, because some of those details do actually add to a little bit of scope with what we're dealing with. You know, it's not a single motoring club, it is a large breadth, and it's widely known that this is a popular destination. The impact on the neighborhoods are still laid out, particularly with certain specific neighborhoods being named within the letter. And I, you know, my thought as I was going through it is just to kind of pare it down so that as an initial communication, it at least gets the ball rolling, and it gives some context to what we're asking for and why we're asking for it. But as with anything I submit, I'm always open to other suggestions.
No, I, I liked it. It, it did, it kind of whittled it down, and it's still, it's going to be copied to Senator Eldridge and Representative Senna. Was there, no, that's the only two for, for air, right?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, all right. So that they're aware of what we're discussing. You know, so, and also, the Devon's Jurisdictional Framework Committee is having their quarterly meeting on the 12th, and Harvard is the host this time, and it'll be a hybrid, Zoom and in-person. And I'm going to bring it up to them also, because there's Devon's residents. So maybe we can get them to kind of understand, and then they, you know, while living on Devon's, can kind of see if they can help push forward this issue also. So I will make a motion that the, that this letter be approved as edited by Selectman Hood.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor? Oh, wait a minute. Do I ask her before we say, I'm so, okay, yes, Pauline? I just, I got thrown in a process question.
Sorry, it's all right, and just a comment, not, not anything to change your decision-making. But where do state police do their training? Don't they also use the airfield?
Yeah, it's a little confusing.
So, you know, I, I hear them more than other motorcycles, and that's fine. Janice, you and I live close enough, so we both hear the same thing. I don't have an opinion either way, other than to say, if we resume jurisdiction, we can stop it. And that's all I'll say on that. All right?
Yes.
Thank you, I, I certainly agree with sending the letter.
Okay. All right, so I did, seconded.
We have a second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye, the letter's approved. Okay. Okay. All right, so. Okay, Town Managers Report.
Madam Chair, members of the board, just very brief this evening. You have the town warrants that were approved since the board last met in the packet. In terms of the administrative update, it's, the lion's share has been budget and town meeting preparation. Just to point out, with your approval tonight, I will be officially posting the warrant by this Friday, April 7th, in accordance with the budget calendar. At that time, it will also be sent to printing and to mailing to all households. The Byboard is meeting next week regarding the budget book for town meeting, as well as the budget presentation. We'll also be doing the Articles of the Day again, as we get closer to town meeting, where we highlight a couple articles each day and, and what they do, sort of in an executive summary. Also, hard copies after April 7th. The warrant or any materials are also available upon, you know, request from my office, and we'll be also posting it on, on the webpage. And I also just want to mention, on Monday, April 17th, which is Patriots' Day at noontime, there is going to be an event to rededicate the Howitzer that's out front of Town Hall that was restored using historic preservation funds from the Community Preservation Committee and some funding from the Facilities Department. So the public is, of course, invited, and that's at noon on April 17th. So unless there are any questions from the board on any administrative matters, it's relatively short tonight.
I don't have anything.
Okay. So I, I thought of something today under New Business Select Board Member Questions. So I am requesting, not the next meeting, but like, maybe the first meeting in May would be nice. Great hall improvements, acoustics. We've, we've, so I have some ideas, and I, and I, so, and I've, without even putting any nails in the, in the windows or anything, you could get one of those springboard curtain rods, and you could even put shears up there, which will help with some of the heat, okay? A few years ago, I, I sent information about how you can get like this, I'll call it a curtain that you basically drape on the ceiling, that help with that acoustics. But, I mean, we used it during the symposium, which, we, we need an update on that.
Okay.
Which was very well, but the acoustics in there are awful. And there are many, many of us in town that would like to get this kind of fixed. So, you know, if we can come up with some ideas and, and how we're going to go about this, and, and, you know, a plan, would be great.
So that would be the May 2nd meeting, I can?
Right, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and I know that there's some funding, and we can talk about this update in, in this budget.
Yeah, and I, and I've mentioned this before, and I always get the, well, oh my God, my neck hurts. I always get the, well, to start last, you can get the film at, like, Home Depot. It's clear, it's like Saran Wrap, it's clear. And you can stick it on the windows, and that also helps with the heat, which would be a good idea for all the windows in this town hall, because I was upstairs today, whoa, I mean, it was only 62 up today, and it was really warm in here. But there are a lot of little things, and like I said, we don't even have to put nails in. You know, but we kind of need to kind of move forward on this, so.
All right, we will have an update for May 2nd.
Okay, great, so. Other than that, I have nothing else.
I have nothing else.
Nobody else seems to, okay?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:21 PM.
Okay, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Good night, everybody, thank you very much.